For the twenty-sixth of February two thousand and twenty-five officially open. In order to start today's proceedings, I'd like to remind everyone that in accordance with clause five point three four of Council's Code of Meeting Practice, I inform the persons attending this meeting that A, this meeting is being recorded, livestreamed and made publicly available on the Council's website, and B, persons attending the meeting should refrain from making any defamatory statements. To start today's proceedings, I would like to welcome Father Anthony Morgan from the St. George Prince Tadros Coptic Orthodox Church to read the prayer of council and acknowledgement of country, which will be followed by the national anthem. Could I please invite everyone to please stand?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, CEO, councillors, members of council, members of the public. Acknowledgement of country. Before we begin proceedings, we would like to acknowledge the Trent traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and their ancestors, past and present, the Kabur Ghul clan of Darag Nation. I also acknowledge that this land was accessed by peoples of the Druel and Durak nations. Affirmation of council. We affirm our hope and dedication to the good government of our city and the well-being of all Liverpool's residents, no matter their race or creed. Tonight, we affirm our hope for sound decision-making by council, which will improve the quality of life in our city. We express our expectations and best wishes for Australia, our nation's future, the mayor, councillors and staff of council, and all those associated with good government in Liverpool. We pray. Almighty God, thank you for our life, our health, and the opportunity to serve within the local government of Liverpool. Send your spirit to touch the hearts of our leaders, endow the spirit of wisdom on our mayor, councillors and all the staff that serve at Liverpool City Council with the familiar words, "The Lord bless you and keep you; the Lord make his face shine upon you, and be gracious to you; the Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you peace." Accept the great goodness that our council strives for and its decisions it makes for the greater goodness of the city of Liverpool. Inspire our leaders to increase the prosperity of which whom they represent. Grant each member talents by which they multiply their fruits. May we please you, our God, this day, and hear us, Almighty God. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. And thank you very much, Father Anthony, for your kind words and prayers, and we thank you for everything that you and your congregation does for the Liverpool community, and wish you a very happy Easter and Lent period. Thank you. We have no councillors attending remotely, we have no apologies and no condolences. The next item is a confirmation of the minutes held on the fifth of February two thousand and twenty-five. Can I move councillor Green that it be accepted? Secondar councillor McNair, is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Are there any declarations of interest? There is no declarations of interest. We'll now move on to... Yep.
Sorry, sorry councillors, just non pecuniary during the discussion in confidential about the CA's recruitment, I'll be required to leave the room.
If anyone else has anyone, they can provide it to me later on. We'll move into the public forum of today's, tonight, today's meeting. Today, I recognise and celebrate an extraordinary milestone for one of Liverpool's longest-standing family-owned businesses, Liverpool Glass, which proudly marks fifty years of outstanding service to our community and beyond. Since its establishment in nineteen seventy-five, Liverpool Glass has become synonymous with high-quality glazing and expert craftsmanship. This remarkable company has built its reputation on the values of safety, quality and professionalism. Refusing to cut corners or compromise on standards, their commitment to delivering exceptional products and service has made them a trusted name across Sydney. Under the leadership of Geoff Gough, who brought fresh energy and a visionary approach after transitioning from his successful transport business, Liverpool Glass has gone from strength to strength. Geoff's stewardship modernised the company while preserving the values that have defined its success for half a century. Today, Liverpool Glass continues to serve smaller companies, families and businesses, always upholding the highest standards of craftsmanship and customer care. Their enduring legacy is a testament to the skill, dedication, hard work of the tradespeople and staff who contributed to this success over the decades. On behalf of Liverpool City Council, I extend our heartfelt congratulations to Liverpool Glass for fifty years of excellence. We acknowledge and appreciate their significant contribution to our local economy and community. May this impressive legacy of trust, service and craftsmanship continue to thrive for many more years to come. And last, if I can say, it's an amazing achievement for a business for fifty years to not only survive but grow and continue the service and become such a trusted and well-respected name, and we're very proud that you have the name Liverpool as part of your business name. So, I thank you and congratulations to you and all your team, Geoff, for the wonderful success of fifty years. Don't, don't sit down yet. And I'd like to formally move that way. Does anyone say anything? No? All those in favour? Oh, what is the... Where's the motion? And then the motions that we receive and note the mayoral minute. Right, thank you. All those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. The next mayoral minute is endorsing the mayoral roundtable statement on social cohesion. Liverpool is a city of believers. Our community is a shining example of multiculturalism, religious faith and inclusivity. An inspiring eighty-seven percent of Liverpool's residents are reported as having a religious affiliation. We are a city of faith and culture, we are a city where city and culture are deeply intertwined, with forty-three point two percent of our residents born overseas and one hundred and forty languages spoken within our community. Our cultural fabric continues to become richer every year. This tapestry of cultural and religious backgrounds underscores Liverpool's status as a vibrant and inclusive community within Sydney. It is this very diversity that makes our city strong, welcoming and resilient. Liverpool is a wonderful example of how so many cultures and religions can co-exist respectfully and safely amongst each other. We are very lucky to live in a community that exemplifies this cohesion. I commend the various religious and cultural leaders within our LGA who continue to serve their communities with passion and dedication and advocate tirelessly for their believers. As councillors, it is our duty to represent and advocate for all our residents, ensuring their voices and needs are recognised and supported. Liverpool City Council has always taken great pride in fostering social harmony, promoting interfaith dialogue and strengthening connections between our diverse communities. Our dedicated council staff work tirelessly to identify and address the specific needs of our many and diverse community, and I thank them wholeheartedly for their continued efforts in this exceptionally important work, which is embraced and delivered in council's current community strategic plan. The mayoral roundtable. On the sixth of February two thousand and twenty-five, I had the privilege of co-hosting the mayoral roundtable on social cohesion, held in Bondi, where twenty-three mayors from across Sydney came together to discuss the importance of unity and to condemn all forms of religious vilification. Together, we endorsed a strong statement reaffirming our commitment to fostering harmony, standing against hate and ensuring that all residents, regardless of their faith or background, feel safe, respected and valued in our communities. I have attached a copy of this statement. Tonight, I am calling on Liverpool City Council to formally endorse this statement, reinforcing our commitment to social cohesion and religious harmony. Liverpool has always been a leader in our multicultural inclusion, a leader in multicultural inclusion, and it is imperative that we continue to lead by example, ensuring that our city remains a beacon of respect, acceptance and unity all. And I'll just read the statement. "We, the mayors of the following councils, are united in calling out violence, hatred and extremism. Our communities are welcoming and connected and made stronger by diverse views, faiths, backgrounds, cultures and identities. The acts of hate and violence seen across Sydney must be condemned in the strongest terms, while these brazen and cowardly acts require prosecution with the full force of the law. These criminal acts aim to create fear, chaos and division. We call on our communities to stand together, as we are standing together, to support one another during these challenging times. We unequivocally condemn the alarming rise in anti-Semitic attacks, as well as acknowledge the broader escalation of racism and violence against racial and faith-based communities, including Muslims, Christians, Jews, Hindus and Buddhists. There is no place for hate in our society. Sydney is a vibrant and proudly multicultural and multi-faith city. Its diverse population is reflected right across the city, creating an inclusive community of which we are proud. Every layer of government and every person in our community has a role to play in maintaining our peaceful, harmonious community in Sydney. Local government plays a crucial role in fostering this inclusivity amongst multicultural communities, where everyone feels safe, respected and valued. We strongly state that local government is for local issues and that foreign affairs is not the remit or expertise of councils. We are committed to being champions of social cohesion and using our leadership and knowledge to combat racism and promote community safety. Our communities deserve to live free from fear and hatred, and we will work together to uphold these values and advocate for the support needed to achieve them. Today, we call on the New South Wales and federal government to take urgent action by recognising local government as a vital tier of government in creating and maintaining social cohesion. Partnering with councils to combat the scourge of antisemitism and protect all communities from vilification, intimidation and violence. Investing in multicultural and interfaith education programmes to strengthen understanding and unity between communities. Enhancing legislation to combat hate crimes and discrimination and ensure stronger protections for all. Supporting local government to develop anti-racism, inclusion and social cohesion strategies and policies and providing security infrastructure and resources where needed to safeguard at-risk communities, including robust and effective policing, to find and charge perpetrators of hate crimes. We will continue to collaborate as elected representatives to advocate for our communities, share best practices, coordinate and promote initiatives, activities and community safety. We intend to formalise this work through strategic frameworks. Our goal is to create a stronger, safer and more united society where everyone feels respected and valued." Signed by the following mayors. And I'd like to formally move that council formally endorses the attached mayoral roundtable statement on social cohesion, two reaffirms its commitment to fostering religious and cultural harmony within the Liverpool community, and three formally condemns all acts of racism and religious vilification towards any members of our community. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. The next mayoral minute is the review of council's media policy. "How you treat a waiter says a lot about your character. This well-known saying reminds us that respect and kindness should extend to everyone, including those who serve our community. In the same spirit, we must ensure that our council staff, who work tirelessly for Liverpool, are treated with dignity and respect, both in person and online. Since late last year, there has been a significant increase in negative social media posts that have included personal attacks on council staff, both collectively and individually. Such conduct not only underlines the well-being of staff, but also threatens the professional reputation of council. We can all have different views, but ultimately we must learn to agree, to disagree, to allow democracy to function. Respectful debate and open discussion are the foundation of our governance. When we engage in constructive dialogue rather than hostility, we strengthen our community and set a positive example for future generations. Our children learn from how we act, both in public and online. If we engage in negativity and disrespect, they see it as acceptable. We must ensure that we always set the right example. Liverpool City Council staff work tirelessly every day to serve our community, often in challenging circumstances. Despite the negativity they may face online, they continue to provide essential services with dedication and professionalism. We sincerely thank them for their unwavering commitment and hard work." While Liverpool City Council's existing media policy provides guidance on media engagement, it requires an urgent review to better reflect contemporary legal frameworks, particularly in relation to cyberbullying and social media conduct by both staff and councillors. I propose that council initiate a formal review of its media policy to ensure it aligns with the current laws and best practices, including but not limited to work, health and safety, online bullying and defamation. Fair, sorry, defamation, fair work, and any other relevant laws. And I'd like to formally move that council endorses a review of the media policy to incorporate the proposed amendments above. Two, request a CA to provide a draft review media policy for council's consideration at a future meeting. Three, implement a regular training programme for staff and councils on responsible social media and media engagement. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Our next one is a world-class upgrade to Fifteenth Avenue. On nineteenth of January two thousand and twenty-five, the New South Wales and federal government announced one billion dollars, and that's B for billion, to upgrade Fifteenth Avenue, the main arterial road between Liverpool and the Aeropolis. This announcement comes off the back of a grassroots council-run campaign calling on the upgrade of the corridor. This initiative must go on, go beyond a simple road upgrade and deliver a transformative infrastructure project that prioritises public transport, connectivity and active transport corridors. Fifteenth Avenue is poised to turn Liverpool's main, to turn into Liverpool's main link into the Brad, into Bradfield and beyond. Currently, more than twenty-two thousand vehicles per day use a two-lane Fifteenth Avenue. Residents face congestion every day and will only worsen as Austro continues to develop. The pressure on our local road network is already unsustainable and further delays will continue to diminish the quality of life of our residents. Western Sydney has done most of the work in providing housing for our city. The community deserves high-quality infrastructure, and I look forward to Fifteenth Avenue being, as Premier Chris Minns stated, "a world-class piece of transport infrastructure." This cannot be just about widening the current road, but creating a high-capacity multimodal transport corridor that serves the region for decades to come. A key objective of this upgrade must be to reduce reliance on private vehicles. Many residents in the surrounding areas currently face the financial burden of owning multiple cars, which is particularly challenging during a cost-of-living crisis. A reliable, efficient and high-speed public transport link will provide an affordable alternative, reducing household expenses whilst improving overall mobility. In order for the road to be world-class, Fifteenth Avenue needs at least six lanes, including a fast transit corridor. The upgrade must include footpaths and cycleways which roam active transport, enhance livability and ensure pedestrian safety. Such a design will ensure seamless movement of people and goods, reducing congestion and travel times whilst facilitating economic growth. Connecting Fifteenth Avenue to Bradfield and Western Sydney International Airport should not be deferred to a later stage beyond the announced two thousand and thirty-one delivery timeframe, which is four years commencing from two thousand and twenty-seven. The community needs this upgrade now. The Premier has promised a world-class infrastructure project. It is our role as a council to hold the stand federal governments to that promise and to give the community the infrastructure they deserve. And I'd like to formally move that council writes the New South Wales government and the federal government, thanking the Premier and the Prime Minister for their one billion commitment to the upgrading of Fifteenth Avenue, whilst also, A, reaffirming council position that a world-class, world-class transport corridor must include a minimum of three lanes in each direction, incorporating a dedicated fast transport corridor, footpath, cycleways to enhance the ability, safety and long-term mobility. B, emphasising the urgency of preserving the Fifteenth Avenue corridor to safeguard the expansion and functionality of the upgraded road. C, directing the New South Wales government, new government to council's Fifteenth Avenue master plan, which outlines council's vision to a fully integrated transport link between Liverpool and the Aeropolis. D, calling on the New South Wales government to expediate the delivery of the project within the announced two thousand and twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and thirty-one timeframe, ensuring that the transport corridor is delivered as part of the initial upgrade and not deferred to a later stage. E, stressing the strategic importance of the upgrade as a key arterial route connecting to Liverpool to Bradfield and Western Sydney International Airport, noting the economic benefits that a rapid transport network will have for residents across the LGA, especially in the way of employment opportunities for residents of the two-one-six-eight postcode. F, calls on the New South Wales government to include Liverpool City Council in planning decisions regarding the upgrade to ensure council has an input in the draft designs of Fifteenth Avenue. Two, thanks council staff, particularly, particularly those within City Futures and Planning and Compliance Directorates for their efforts in advocating for this critical infrastructure upgrade and mobilising the community through a grassroots campaign. C, writes the Mark Currie, the member for Oatley, Shadow Minister for South West Sydney, thanking him for his advocacy and for sponsoring council's parliamentary petition. Four, writes Mr. Nathan Haggerty, MP, member for Leppington, thanking him for his advocacy for Fifteenth Avenue. Five, writes Anne Sanley, MP, member for Werewa, thanking her for her advocacy for Fifteenth Avenue. C, acknowledges the concerns of the community in Austro Milton Grains, especially regarding safety and travel times on Fifteenth Avenue, and thanks residents for supporting council's advocacy efforts. Is there any discussion? Everyone deserves credit. Everybody, everyone deserves the credit. And, any discussion? You can put that on the record for now. Assuming you vote for it. If, if there's no discussion, I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous, and thank you, councillor Green. Okay. Two more to go, and these ones are shorter. The next one is regarding Miracle Babies. Miracle Babies Foundation is Australia's leading organisation supporting the premature and sick newborns, their families and the hospitals that care for them. Every year in Australia, around forty-eight thousand newborn babies require the help of a neonatal intensive care unit, or NICU, or a special care nursery, SCN. Twenty-seven thousand of these babies are born premature and up to one thousand babies lose their fight for life. Miracle Babies is a Liverpool-based charity, having been established in collaboration with the Liverpool Newborn Intensive Care Unit. Council has a long history of supporting Miracle Babies and is proud to be the home of such an important and longstanding organisation, which provides vital support to so many people in our community at such a challenging time in their lives. This year, Miracle Babies will celebrate twenty years of supporting the community. To celebrate this milestone, they'll be holding two key events in Liverpool. The first in May two thousand and twenty-five is a gala dinner at the William English Hotel, which will raise much-needed funds to support Miracle Babies to continue their amazing work with Australia's premature and sick newborns and their families. The second event planned for November two thousand and twenty-five will highlight and celebrate the Miracle Babies community story through an exhibition at the Yala Mundi Library Gallery in partnership with the Cultural Festival and Events Team. This exhibition will coincide with World Premature Day on seventeenth of November two thousand and twenty-five. To acknowledge council's longstanding support of Miracle Babies and celebrate this important milestone for this organisation, it is recommended that council provide in-kind support to the value of two thousand five hundred dollars and present a commemorative plaque at the gala dinner. Funding for this event will be drawn from council's civilian events programme budget. And I'd like to move that council recognise a twenty-year milestone of Miracle Babies Foundation and its contribution in Liverpool, and to endorse in-kind support to the value of two and a half thousand dollars and present a commemoration plaque at the Miracle Babies Events Gala Dinner at the William O'English Hotel in May two thousand and twenty-five. Any discussion? I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. And last but not least is the recognition of the Serbian community in Liverpool. The Serbian community across Liverpool has made and continues to make significant contributions to our city. Many of our residents of Serbian heritage now call Liverpool home. On the fifteenth of February two thousand and twenty-five, I had the pleasure of representing the city of Liverpool at the Serbian Festival Sydney, held in Darling Harbour. The SFS is an entirely volunteer-organised and run event headed up by the Serbian Orthodox Youth Association Incorporated, SOYA, based here in Liverpool. The SFS is one of the largest displays of Serbian culture outside of Europe and had over eighty thousand visitors across the two-day event. It was a tremendous occasion and the absolute best of multiculturalism was on display. I congratulate the organisers on a fabulous event. To acknowledge the contribution of our Serbian community to Liverpool, I propose that and would like to move that, one, council engage in discussions with SOYA around sponsorship options for the Serbian Festival Sydney in future years and other activities conducted by SOYA. Two, in conjunction, in conjunction with the Serbian Council of Australia, the peak body of the Serbian Orthodox community, SOYA and the Serbian Orthodox Church investigate and bring a report back to a future council meeting, the opportunity to dedicate a park to the Serbian community. Three, create a register of street names to be used when required, which recognises all the various multicultural influences in the vibrant city of Liverpool, including the name Serbia Boulevard, Belgrade Parade, Obelik Avenue and Avada Drive in recognition of the Serbian community and other, and the other communities within, who call Liverpool home. Any discussion? I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Thank you, everyone. We'll now move into the agenda. The first item is Plan Zero One, Planning Proposal Industrial Land in Austro. Page number seventy-two in your agendas, tab one, with the recommendation in page number seventy-three. And I, as we go into the agenda, we do have a fairly large agenda and we have not, we've been having thorough debates with each one, but I'm just mindful of councils that if we can be very succinct and to the point, so we can move on. Microphone, please councillor, thank you.
Terribly sorry. Happy to move as per the book?
Yep. Moved councillor Green. Do we have a seconder? Secondar deputy mayor, is there any discussion? I will put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Can you just keep them up because this has to be recorded? Yep, that's unanimous. Thank you. Next item is Com Zero One.
Happy to move as per the book.
Yep. Defibrillators of Sporting Fields, page eighty-three, tab two with the recommendation on page number eighty-three. Move councillor Monahan, secondar councillor McNair. Is there any discussion? I will put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is Com Zero Two, Council Grants, Donations and Sponsorship Report, page ninety-one, tab three with the recommendation on page ninety-one.
Happy to move as per the book.
Move councillor Monahan, secondar councillor Green. Is there any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is Com Zero Three, National General Assembly Conference, page ninety-seven, tab four with the recommendation on page ninety-eight.
Happy to move that way, as in the book?
Moved councillor Green. Any seconder? Secondar deputy mayor, would you like to speak for your motion? I have a question to fly. But you go first, please.
I think that the national conference is actually a very good networking opportunity, as well as hearing from a national perspective. I mean, it's an opportunity where the role of local government is... I mean, it’s an opportunity where the role of local government is put forward as critical. And, I mean, ALGA does a wonderful job advocating for local councils across the country nationally. So it’s always very interesting to hear their report back from the federal government as well. I mean, I highly recommend other councillors who have not been to at least consider, to attend. It’s a very well-run conference.
Right. We have until next month, to the end of March, according to this report, to submit any motions for the conference. So can I recommend that maybe that matter be discussed at the governance meeting, at the next governance meeting?
Absolutely.
Would that work with staff? Yep, great.
Can I also ask that if anyone does have a motion that they want to put forward, that perhaps they circulate it amongst other councillors, so that we can be, you know, well-prepared?
Yep. I’ll flag one, I think that is relevant, that we should be taking up, is that the issue with respect to federal Commonwealth land that is not required to pay rates. As everyone knows, whilst we are supporters of the airport here, they are not paying anything and have not paid anything for a very long time for their land. And it’s particular since the construction of the airport over the last ten years, there has been a significant burden on our community with respect to the roads and infrastructure. So I think that would be something that would be great to take up if councils agree.
I guess, I do tally on to that. I’m wondering if maybe a complimentary motion to that might be also, that the government take on the responsibility for the roads. So, you know, because this is national infrastructure.
Yep.
And we know that, you know, from the airport, there’s going to be a lot of increased traffic and looking up like trucks and stuff, so it’s worth a go, I think.
Yeah, and I think just looking at the guidelines, it would have to be done as not specific to the airport. The airport can be an example, but I think it would be along the lines of that when the Commonwealth has land in the area and has a significant impact on the community, you know, that they should be paying that relevant council rates and a proper assessment of the impact on such as roads and that.
Can we just support that?
I’ll refer to the CEO.
Thank you. Through the chair, just to remind the councillors that motions should be lodged electronically at www.alga.com, received no later than midnight on the thirty-first of March. So if you’re having consensual decisions, you’ve got four and a half weeks to do it. And just so I note that number twelve on the agenda is circular economy, so any of the councillors going down should be clear advocates for our mattress recycling capability.
Yep. Councillor McNaul?
I have a question and a point as well. I just wanted to know how many voting delegates we get and how many people will be wanting to go, and also the cost of sending each councillor to the conference, if that’s available, please.
I’ll refer that to the CEO.
Yeah, through the chair, I’ll take on notice. We’ve got some anecdotal evidence on the cost per councillor, and we’ll supply that in due course.
Do we have a rough idea of what the last one cost us?
Depending on travel arrangements, we’re looking at probably somewhere between seven hundred to nine hundred dollars, all-inclusive, given two nights’ accommodation.
And then, is there registration free for each councillor who would like to attend?
Through the chair, we looked at some data from the previous season, couldn’t find many that attended, but from the TAM with conferences, about three thousand, which is a very similar in scale in terms of time, accommodation, and depending on whether you fly. And the lie gets roughly about three thousand, which we take from our Civic and Executive Services Conference budget. And to answer your question, there was another question about...
So just, so that’s around three thousand dollars per person attending?
Yeah, roughly, this is roughly, yes.
Yeah. So theoretically, if we all attend, that’s thirty-three thousand plus whatever staff would come along. Yeah. Because I know, sorry, I know, I know LGNSW, there was like a registration fee per attendee of like a thousand odd dollars or eleven hundred dollars. Yeah, yeah. Councillor McNaul? Microphone, please, and Jason.
My other question was just around, I know that, and I’m not sure, I haven’t been to the ALGA conference before, but we have a certain amount of voting delegate positions. Is that the same at the national conference, or it’s not like that?
I, my understanding was one, but we have to take it on notice to confirm if that’s changed since the last time.
We could even just bring that back to governance, that will be fine. Thank you.
So, we now need to... Who would like to go? Because that’s...
I’d like to decision to that.
Yeah, well, we’d have to change, change the point number one, rather than say confirm.
Can we register interest?
I’ll say that, so you would do that, if we go back to, go to point one, please, in the beginning of the sentence. Councillors confirm their attendance with the CEO. As soon, as soon as possible.
Let’s have a date.
Yep.
Next Wednesday.
Yep.
One week today.
Pick a...
Wednesday, the fifth.
Yep, Wednesday, the fifth, and I can tell you that, not that I’ve gone to this, I’ve not gone to this conference, but if you book late, you stay in a very cold hotel and get ammonia, like some councillors have done in previous times, so...
I can vouch that the accommodation in Canberra was quite central, and we only walked, we had to walk around the corner to the, to the convention centre.
Yep.
It was good.
Yep. And we, and we should, we should, I think there should be a point that notes that the allocated budget is up to thirty thousand dollars for this, because that’s what it looks like it’s gonna... It is an expenditure matter.
Can I just ask for some clarification, sorry, on the point three, rescheduling the June council meeting? I just, I flagged this the other day, I just want to make sure that it fits in or there is a way to make it fit in with our budget obligations that need to be finalised by June thirty. It kind of brings us back a week. So is it going to make any difference is basically my question?
Through the general manager, no, not really, councillor. Basically, we have to provide twenty-eight days’ notice, so twenty-eight days before that date, at least, we have to go out to the public, and we will probably be, it’ll either fit the May meeting, or we’ll call an extraordinary meeting, which is typically what we do, to make sure that there’s time for that twenty-eight days’ notice plus time to review the submissions.
Because I know that we moved that May meeting to do that, but anyway, that’s fine, as long as we can do the extraordinary. Yep, good, thank you.
Yep, and can we just incorporate that, the thing I just said about the airport, if everyone is happy with that, just so it’s, because I’ll probably forget to probably send an email about it, but the Commonwealth land motion. Yeah.
Mr Mayor, does point five need to stipulate what account it’s coming from, the civic events?
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think it should just out of, just to be, out of, from the current, I think if, at the end of the thirty thousand, from the current civic and events budget. Yeah, it’s up to, yeah. I reckon, it depends how many of us decide to go. I probably won’t go, but letting you know. Oh no, actually, I think I should go to that one, if I’m going to talk about this airport one. Government land, government land and rates, as discussed, be prepared.
Jennifer, Jennifer, should you like to not start drafting?
I’m sure it’ll be a very thorough motion.
Just to clarify, just to clarify the wording, civic and executive services budget, training budget.
Executive services. All right, thank you for that. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Just, just the point.
Yes, Deputy Mayor?
For those who’ve been there before, it gets cold at that time of the year, and make sure that you’ve got antifreeze and a good battery in your car. The previous time we went down there, we were several people whose vehicle wouldn’t start because of the battery not accustomed to really cold conditions. So just a point, no, we won’t dive in who did. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, point five, it should say civic and executive services budget. So remove training.
Yep. All right, any further discussion? All right, I will put the motion, all those in favour, please raise your hands, against, I declare it unanimous. Next item is mayoral attendance at the Fifth Annual Airtropolis Conference, seventh of May, in Hong Kong. Councillor McNaul?
I have an amendment.
Sorry, councillor McNaul. Yeah, do you have a seconder? Yep, second deputy councillor Moon. Yep, councillor, would you like to speak for your motion?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. I think this is an amazing opportunity to showcase Liverpool on the international stage. We have an airtropolis, as we’re all very aware of and very excited about, and this is exactly what I would expect community leaders to do, particularly the mayor to do, is to go and present what we’ve done, learn from other people in similar situations, get some on-the-ground experience from people who are maybe a little bit further down the project than we are, and see, you know, talk about Liverpool, sell Liverpool to the world, let them know that we are open for business, we have an amazing new airport coming. I think this is a wonderful opportunity to bring as much attention to Liverpool as we can.
Lovely, thank you. Councillor Ryszewski, you have an amendment?
Yeah, look, I totally agree with everything she just said. I would actually love to attend, but I will pay my own airfare accommodation, so it doesn’t cost the ratepayer anything.
That would be a, well, I think, how would that work? That’s a, I think you’d have to contact the organisers, and you can do that with yourself, it doesn’t need a resolution to do that. And that would be...
Can we ask the, there’s a motion there that says the CEO or alternative officer, why don’t we change it and put my name on there? It would be a good opportunity to travel together.
I don’t see any humour in your statement, councillor Ryszewski. So just to, with respect to your point, it’s a, it’s a superfluous, so if you’re saying you want to amend point three to remove CEO to yourself, okay?
But also adding there that I’m paying my own airfare as an accommodation.
So if you can add that, yep. Is there a seconder for that amendment? The amendment lapses. All right, seconded councillor Carnib.
Can I just make a point for clarity? That if any councillor wanted to attend, they could contact the organiser and pay their own airfares and accommodation and registration fee, is that correct?
Pardon?
If any councillor wants to attend, they can contact the organiser and pay the registration fee and pay their own airfares and attend, is that correct?
Correct. Well, that’s...
Without a motion of council, I just wanted to make sure if you wanted to, you could.
Yeah, you’d have to talk to the organisers.
Yeah, thank you.
So just, just for the, for the councils and the community, we receive many invitations to attend different things, and I think I have spoken at this conference once before. This is where the organisers, they have, they have said if you, we will, the organisers are ultimately paying for the airfare and for the, I think, two nights or three nights accommodation to go along. So, yeah, that’s, there is no cost to this to ratepayers, as the report says, unless a staff member comes along, which would be covered from frequent flyer points and so on and so forth.
I just have a question.
Yes, councillor Monahan?
Is this an amendment or a foreshadowed motion? Is this an amendment to the original motion moved in the name of McNaul and Amun, or is it a foreshadowed motion?
Let me just have another read of it. Yeah, I’ll, I think actually take this as a foreshadowed motion.
In that event, do the mover and the seconder, do they support amending their motion or not?
No.
Um, no, it would be, it’s different, you know? Um, yeah. Yep, so we’ll deal with the, we’ll deal with the motion as moved by councillor McNaul first. So, yeah, ultimately, councillor, I can see there’s a lot of probably more, these invitations will come. I frankly don’t care, I’m happy not to attend. Going, going for, was it eight or ten hours on a plane and coming back and speaking for probably a half an hour, hour, there is good learnings from it. We did definitely learn a lot about airtropolises in cities in previous times. I think it’s very important that a staff member does go there, because they gain a lot, obviously, from an operational perspective as well. I’m, I’m pretty certain that during the term of when Kirsten Fischberg and CEO, that many staff should travel to different airports around the world to learn from it. So, yeah, but it’s up to you, if you guys want me to talk and promote the city, I’m happy to, if not, I’m comfortable, I can assure you I’m comfortable either way. Councillor Green?
I’m more than happy for you to take up the invitation, it’s been an invitation from, as a speaker, from a conference, from conference organisers, so I don’t see a problem with that at all. In terms of a council officer, I mean, I don’t know, I, back of my head, I wondered if someone from City Futures, someone who’s been working on this particular project for quite some time, you know, in terms of, you know, being able to also support in speaking about what Liverpool’s experiences and the challenges or the wins we’ve had, whatever. So, you know, for me, I would, I’d like to see, you know, one of the, either from City Futures.
And if we could stipulate that, we could, but we cannot direct a staff member, we’d have to do it through the CEO.
I know, I know. I guess I’m just being...
I agree with you, I guess I said it to agree with you.
That have the expertise and have been working on this project for some time, that they’re involved in discussions, you know, it would make, it would make sense to me.
Yeah, lovely. All right. Any, are you speaking for or against the motion, councillor?
The first motion or the second?
The first motion.
The first motion. I’m not going to, I’ll speak against it in a very general sense, just to say, I’m certainly not in a disagreement that a CEO or alternate officer accompany yourself, Mr Mayor, but is it problematic to query with the organisation whether or not councillor Ryszewski can just attend and pay his own way as part of that, as a fore, just to write to the organisation to see if they’ll have an alternate councillor attend?
In, sorry, in what sense? In their own capacity or as, rather than myself?
No, no, of course not. One to three is perfectly fine, I don’t disagree with the CEO or alternate officer. I can see the logic and the positives of someone coming from, someone leaving from council, attending from an operational perspective and the learnings they can take. But I think just simply asking the organisation if another councillor attends, if there’s not going to be any cost to it, I just don’t see any harm in asking. If they say no, they say no.
So the way that these, this is a professional event organising company, so they put out the speakers list, and then they go and sell tickets across, so I think if anyone who wants to buy a ticket can attend, right? So that’s how it works?
I get you, but what my point is, is the motion that’s currently framed is the CEO or an alternate officer to accompany the mayor. There’s no issues with that, but I don’t, if it’s a CEO or alternate officer, why can’t it just be canvassed, did he attend? No one’s suggesting that councillor Ryszewski speak on behalf of Liverpool, he’s not the mayor.
Yeah.
I gauge that, I don’t, no one’s suggesting that, but just simply to write to them, you know, like if any other councillor... You know, like if any other councillor suggested an expression of interest, if I had the availability, I'd love to go.
Anyone can, that can, that can be done easily, anyone can, anyone can call up and pay their own way and travel if they wanted to.
No, of course.
And just pay, I think the registration fee is probably a couple of thousand dollars for those who want to attend, plus airfares and accommodation. So if people, if people want to do that, I'm sure the organisers won't say no, that's their business, they're there to sell tickets.
Completely agree, but if there's a motion from council that's about, that's about the summit, then letting them know that somebody else who is a councillor who may attend is really just courtesy. You know, councillor Rostewski may attend. I just don't see, you know, even a four, for example, that would say councillor Rostewski may attend as a councillor from Liverpool, whether or not he chooses to go is a matter for him.
Now, look, councillors, if you want to stay here all night and we want to get to that nitty gritty and do things that don't need to be parts of motions, we can do it. But ultimately, you've made your point councillor, we'll now, we'll move on. I'll put the, would you like a write a reply councillor McNair? No, okay, I'll put the motion as per the screen. All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against... All those in favour, please raise your hands. Against, I declare the motion lost. Great, we'll now deal with the foreshadowed motion. Councillors, I have to inform you in order to deal with the foreshadowed motion, we would need to go on closed section, into closed session under section... We'd have to go under closed session, under section 10A2, 10A2F of the Act. And I'll have to be stepping out from the chair. So if you'd like to move that way, feel free to. All right. Yep, so anyway, I'll move that, we move into section, I'll move that we go into closed section, under the relevant clause.
What is that, through the CEO to the legal council here tonight? What does that mean for everyone in the audience?
Well, quite simply that when we go into closed session, council has the, under the law Government Act, under section 10A of the Act, in particular different circumstances. This section, section 2F, is pretty straightforward. I'll read it out, it's that 2F is regarding matters affecting the security of the council, councillors, council staff or council property. So under that section is I move that we go into closed session.
I disagree and I move we stay into open session.
Yep. Okay, that's fine, do I have a second there? Second councillor McNair, any discussion? I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Against, I declare it lost. Thank you councillors, I mind, I will, I'll be removing myself from the chair and ask the deputy mayor to take over.
Division, division.
Yep.
Division.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, before you leave. If we resolve for, I just want to have a look at, can you just move the screen down a little bit please? If we resolve for you to... If we resolve for people to attend this conference, does that mean that they are bound to attend and we are, or it's...
Through the chair, chairs. The, the resolution is, would not mandate that councillor Rostewski must attend because he's not, not obliged by that resolution. It's, it's an intent to attend and that council would be supporting his attendance. If, if something happened in the period between now and the period where councillor Rostewski was going to attend and he didn't, I, I don't think that would be a material issue.
I'm more also asking about if we, if we say that the, provide a determination for the attendance of the mayor. If the mayor doesn't go, that doesn't mean we, we haven't satisfied this resolution of council?
That's my understanding as well. I would have thought if we go back to the original motion, that it is as simple as the CEO, comma, an alternate, sorry, another councillor or alternate officer accompany Mayor Manon to Hong Kong.
That's...
And that, that may satisfy, unless we want to nominate the councillor.
With the, the greatest of due respect for what I was trying to propose earlier, but noting that that motion is lost and now propose again to the mover and the second, that point three should simply read nominate a council delegate and acting CEO or alternate officer to attend the mayor, attend with Mayor Manon. That way, council, councillors...
Any of those three combinations?
Yes. That would satisfy both the initial motion and the now foreshadowed motion, which is the current motion before the council. And that if anyone wished to attend as a delegate, as well as with the CEO or an alternate officer, because it's important that the organisation has someone with the operational know-how of the council attend, as well as, you know, as the, as the Act states under section 226, the spokesperson, the official spokesperson of the council being the mayor. I don't see a problem with how, with sending an additional delegate from the council, as long as, again, the operational arm is represented as well as the, the official spokesperson. I was trying to get that out amongst the melee that was there, but if that's amenable to the mover, the now mover and second, I think that's probably the best way to proceed.
I have no issues with what councillor Monahan just said. I said that earlier that I endorsed the first motion, but if anyone, any other councillor here wanted to express their interest to go and to write to the organisation, I'd support any one of us, including myself. So I just, the first motion was perfectly fine, I'm happy for it to read the way it was. But just add in, as what councillor Monahan suggested, another councillor if they wish to attend.
Mr Deputy Mayor, I just want to raise, is the reason why the mayor has stepped out relating to a WHO issue?
And that's why we wanted to go into confidential.
I'd, I'd rather we don't because this is recorded and the community has a right to be in the room and we need to maintain transparency.
And at the same time, if, if we've got a confidential matter to discuss and the reason why we were, the mayor moved to move, move into closed session, I think we need to discuss those matters frankly, and if that means if we have to go into closed session, so be it.
Closed session is not recorded and that's why it's important that we don't go into closed session.
Can I say this, Deputy Mayor? The way it's been proposed to resolve, being the original motion and simply adding in a councillor, would not bring us into a confidential issue because no one specifically named, it's just a councillor. Therefore, there would be no need to close. If the mover and second are, being the mover councillor Rostewski, if he supports that, and I do, well then, it's simply the first motion with, comma, a councillor. Therefore, I don't see it triggering 10A2F.
So can we go back so we can read the first bit?
Can I suggest that the entire first motion is copy and pasted into this proposed motion? It's a shame we have to do it this way, but... And literally, the CEO, comma councillor, or alternate officer. And perhaps in the circumstances, the word to accompany the mayor is changed to consider attending with the mayor.
Through the chair, would that actually, if we were to do that, would that cost council anything? Because you're adding another person to the list. So that extra person would have to pay for accommodation, they have to pay for registration, they have to pay for flights, which the actual provider is not doing that because they're only doing that for the mayor. The invitation was only for the mayor. If we do it in that manner, that means we're saying that we're going to have to pay for the councillor.
Perhaps then a four to say that if any councillor chooses to attend, they pay their own way?
That's probably the best way. Because if, if you do it this way, it sounds like council's going to have to pay for, for the councillor. But if you do it the other way...
I've made it, yeah, exactly, I've made it on record that I'm not seeking any ratepayers money, I'll pay my own way there.
The move, yep, yep, so... Unless, look, that's, that's, I think that's, that addresses the issues, we don't need to move into confidential.
Mr Chair, just, just for the, just for the record, it's just been brought to my attention that it's the mayor, CEO or alternate officer, which means one of the staff, not another councillor, that the invitation was extended to, is that correct?
Yeah, oh, sorry.
If you don't mind, if we can refer it to...
Referred as a CEO?
Through the, through the CEO, the, the way, the way I read that is it says the, the CEO, councillor or alternate, which is one other person. Just for clarification.
The way it's currently read is one or the other, but before it meant councillor as well, could have been. But also the officer was not a councillor.
That's right.
Correct.
I think another little grammar lesson might clear it up. Just put another comma between councillor or alternate officer to make it three units rather than the CEO, councillor or alternate, which reads as the one, that clears it up, that's three.
And if we change it to councillors, councillor slash S, in case there's more than one councillor that wants to attend? Yep.
To the deputy mayor, I, I believe that with point four, if any councillor wishes to attend by self-funded, within their regards to get invitation from the organisation. No? No?
It's a ticketed event, so anyone can buy a ticket and go.
Deputy Mayor, I'll just move the motion to be put at this stage.
Just, could I suggest on point three, that you remove the word councillors because you're covering that in four? Would you agree with that? Remove, in other words, that will read, the CEO or alternate officer to consider attending with the mayor, Manon to Hong Kong, blah, 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 the rest of it. And then for any councillors that wish to attend, they self-fund. I think that gets over the issue of paying.
Deputy Mayor, I have no issues with that.
Happy with that? So I'm hap, I'm put that motion forward. We need a, oh, we have, no, we haven't got a mover for that, have we? Can't see it, right.
Sorry, my understanding in the, I don't recall which policy it is, we have to provide a determination as to whether the mayor will attend. Point two, as it stands, just says provide a determination, so does it mean, do we have to confirm the mayor's attendance to this conference in this motion?
Through the CEO.
Thank you, through the chair, yes, we would confirm subject to the advice of council tonight. Back to the event organisers. Notwithstanding, again, he was invited and he is speaking, so it's on the, it'll be on the agenda, they would need to print things. And ticket sales may be subject to speaker's popularity.
So, yeah, so does that mean this motion, does point two need to change? Say confirms, as in, as a positive that he will be attending, confirms the mayor's attendance?
Yeah, through the chair, that's fine, confirms the attendance of the mayor, if that's the resolution. The, the information's council tonight, he's, he has been invited. The paper clearly identifies the invitation, the lack of requirement for payment, two nights accommodation, et cetera, et cetera, and we would confirm that. I get, sorry, council would confirm that if they resolved this way.
Just, can we get confirmation that we as council need to confirm his RSVP or the mayor's RSVP? I'm looking, section 4.10 states the policy of any overseas travel for councillors must be approved by a meeting of the full council, sorry, the full council. Well, sorry, yeah, okay, that, yeah, point two.
Thanks councillor Green.
Can I suggest we put the motion? Put the motion, those in, all in favour? Put it the other way, against? One, thank you. So, do you, division? Thank you, we've got that, but we have some issues that I'm not at liberty to discuss, so we need a five minute recess. Thank you. I believe you have a rescission motion?
Yes, I do, to know that rescission motion in regards to the previous motion put as a matter of O H and S.
So you need to, I, in fact, I'll get the CEO to read out the conditions.
Thank you councillors, just on relation to the rescission motion proposed under the code of meeting practice, section 1711, subject to clause 1770, cases of urgency, a motion to alter or rescind the resolution, council may be moved at the same meeting, which is tonight, at which the resolution adopted where three things coexist. Notice of motion is signed by three councillors, is submitted to the deputy mayor. A motion to have the motion considered is passed by council and that the deputy mayor in this encase rules that the business that is subject to the motion is of great urgency on the grounds that it requires a decision by the council before their next scheduled ordinary meeting of council. So they're the three things that must happen. Signed nom by three councillors, that motion is then put and the chairperson must rule that the business, that this business needs to be done at this meeting, essentially. Can we move it to the end?
I prefer for it to be dealt with straight away, please.
Well, there's an audience here, there's an audience here that want to get on with the agenda, let's move it to the end. Let, let them get through what they've come here for and we can deal with it at the end. So is the community being here tonight, let's not waste their time with silly buggers.
I'm addressing the chair, thank you.
Through the chair, I think it's unfair to the community here tonight. It's eight o'clock, two hours have gone, we haven't even started the agenda. We've had people here speaking about certain items.
Point of order.
Let's move on.
We have started the agenda, we're well into the agenda, staff have put a lot of time and effort into this and so let's hear the rescission motion and then get on with the agenda.
That's fine, but that's going to be debated for quite some time, let's move it to the end. Through the chair, if you've got something to say, do it through the chair, don't address me directly.
Thank you. It's my decision, so I suggest we do it now and get it over with. So, we need three names on a rescission motion?
Just give me two minutes.
Thank you.
Can we get on with the other agenda while we're waiting?
No, that would mean other councillors would not be able to participate. Right, I have a rescission motion here, which states, we, the undersigned councillors, move a rescission motion for the resolution of comma four, mayoral attendance at the fifth annual Eritreopolis Conference, seventh of eight, seventh to the eighth of May, twenty twenty five, in Hong Kong. Uh, and it's signed by three councillors. I would put the motion, those people who vote for the rescission motion, please indicate by voting. One, two, three, four. Thank you for the audience. So the motion is put, and again, those people for the motion, would you please vote, one, two, three, four. Four people for, those against? Two, four, five, six. So the motion is lost, the rescission motion is lost, and we continue.
Mr Chair, I'd like to remove myself from the meeting because it is an O H and S matter that was just voted on, and other councillors decided not to vote for O H and S, so thank you very much.
So what do you intend to do? Intend to leave the meeting? How many councillors intend to leave the meeting? Councillor Hart, you're leaving as well? We're just trying to find out if we have enough councillors for a quorum, which I believe we have, so we can continue with the, the meeting.
Deputy Mayor, would it be appropriate just to have a five-minute recess while the acting CEO makes some inquiries?
Yes, thank you, that's a good, another good idea. Sorry, audience, we've got some issues, which is obviously causing some delays, and my apologies on, on my behalf, thank you. So we'll have another five minutes, feel free to talk. Convene the meeting, and the first item on, the continuing item is comma five, which is on page one thirty, tab six, and the recommendation is on page one thirty-one.
Um, I'm happy to move as per the book, um, bar one slight amendment, um, to the proposed code.
We'll just widely, just, we'll just widely get, comes up there. Good, thank you. Sorry, so it was moved by councillor Monahan, seconded by councillor Knibb. Any discussion?
Um, so, just before we move on this, one slight amendment to the proposed code.
Slight amendment.
Uh, instead of utilizing three point two, utilizing three point one, which, um, I'm advised ought to read, council meetings to be held monthly commencing at six P M. Council meetings to be held on the fourth Wednesday of the month, with the exception to the months of February, November and December. Exceptions are to be outlined in an annual report presented to council, tabling council meeting dates for the following year.
You'll just have to wait till we get back there, so the person recording that has got all of what you said.
I'm happy to provide those words.
You're happy to provide that to the person, thank you.
Uh, thank you, through the chair, there was just one amendment to, I think, in the April meeting due to that Canberra event. Does that need to change in this document?
Microphone, councillor.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, this is purely to, uh, specify that the council meetings will commence at six P M. The only amendment that's being occasioned here is three point two, which is the current format, is being changed to a three point one, and it's to read a specific way, as per councillor Monahan providing that to the staff. Uh, yes.
So we'll have that in a moment.
Sorry, um, we. I don't, I don't think we can do this, councillors, that, the council has two options from the code of meeting practice, we have to either choose three point one or three point two. Under three point one, we have to identify the frequency, date, time, place, et cetera, of the meetings. This is a melange of that, because it provides that, there will be exceptions provided by council resolution.
With respect, general counsel, through the chair, we had a discussion the other day, both yourself, myself, councillor Monahan, and Miss Tina Bono, and this was the proposed discussion. We are guided by you in terms of the legalities, in terms of specifics, we spoke about it being the days of being the last Wednesday in every month, in terms of it being specified in there. Is the way I understood it, this was prepared by staff, this was not prepared by us.
So, so not.
I'm happy to take your amendments, just to tidy it up, there's no issues with that.
This version is not drafted by me, it will not work, because it needs to be either specified in the code of meeting practice in accordance with three point one, or three point two to be fixed by resolution, not a mixture of the two. And, and, and sorry, just to say, councillor, this, this is a choice, because one option requires you to be very clear in the code of meeting practice and fix the frequency of all meetings. It takes away the flexibility that you would have by going with option three point two. Pursue it to which council would annually, or at such frequency as it chooses to, set the frequency of its meetings.
Uh, through the chair, to general counsel. The way this particular section in the code is proposed to be structured is that it occur the last Wednesday of every month, at Wednesday, being at six P M. I, I don't see the issue, that's the way the code is structured, that's what we discussed the other day, being that if you, if you give it a date, time and location, that's what is required.
I, I, I can't keep giving the same advice again. This, this, all I can say is, in my view, this does not meet either three point one or three point two, it is a mixture of both.
So, like I said, through the chair, to general counsel, this was provided to us by staff earlier today, following our meeting on Monday. I'm happy for you, we discussed that three point one being the option, we spoke about it collectively. I'm happy for you to structure it whichever way you think is legal, as long as it stipulates that it commences at six P M, and it occurs on the last Wednesday of every month. I don't see a problem with that. That's, that's what it requires. We can take the exceptions out. Perhaps if it could be typed up this way. Council meetings. Perhaps the new ten. So council meetings to commence at six P M. On the last Wednesday of February all the way through to November. Full stop. Council is to have two council meetings in February. The first is the first, the first Wednesday of the month of February. And the, and the latter, sorry, and the next being the last Wednesday. In terms of the first sentence, if that can, actually, no. Sorry, I, I'm sorry to council staff, if, if the second, because it's the last Wednesday of February all the way through to November, then the second sentence only needs to cover the first meeting in February, which is council is to have a second meeting in February, and that's to be the first Wednesday of February. Not if council, council is to also meet on the first Wednesday of every February. Full stop. That, that whole last sentence can be removed. The council meeting in December. It can just attach to nine. Does it traditionally occur through the CEO, um, does it traditionally occur on the second Wednesday or the third Wednesday? Traditionally. Council meeting in December is to occur on the second Wednesday. So council meetings. Should I say that again? Yeah, on the second, the council meeting in December is to occur on the second Wednesday of that month, that's okay. So just to go through it from the top, council meetings to commence at six P M. To commence at six P M on the last Wednesday of every, of February. Just get, get rid of all the way, so through to November. Council is to also meet on the first Wednesday of February. The council meeting in December is to occur on the second Wednesday. And the location needs to be specified, I believe, so perhaps the last sentence is that the council meetings to occur at Liverpool Council Chambers. Through the chair, to general counsel. Through the Chair to General Counsel, does that make the requirements?
It meets, it meets the requirements of certainty. I think you should just also, I think you need also to add for the early February meeting and the December meeting that those will also take place at 6pm.
The council meetings. Through the Chair to General Counsel, is that, is that fine now?
That, I, I think that is compliant with option 3.1. It, it will leave the, just to be clear, because I think it's fair to say, it will leave the council in a less flexible position if you wanted to move meetings around.
I hear you. I, I understand that, through the Chair to, to the General Counsel, but I think mandating council meeting times provides all councillors to make sure that they're available and are, are aware of the dates and times that they occur being two Wednes-, two Wednesdays in February. You know, not being the Christmas period in December, it should be ironclad, it's, it's, it will catch no councillors by surprise, it's the way we operate currently.
Councillors, I can see there is an issue. And the issue, I believe, is it does remove flexibility. You need to remember that sometimes this council has taken its meetings to rural communities. That's happened several times. And council was able to do that. I'm not sure if it was able to do that with the previous Code of Meeting Practice, but we certainly did. We had meetings in rural areas. I'm not sure if this removes that flexibility. And I take the advice of the General Counsel.
I'm concerned that it does, because there are two choices that are given in the model code. One is that you specify the frequency, et cetera, of meetings in the code. The other is you do it by resolution. And it seems to me that the resolution option is intended to provide more flexibility, so that you could by resolution vary an earlier one to, to change the, the place or the time. So, so this is, because the Code of Meeting Practice is a document which goes to public exhibition, it is then agreed by the council, and if you wanted to change it, you then have to go through the, the process again. So it's much harder to adjust.
Which means you need the 28 days exhibition to get the changes through. Councillors, you need to think about this carefully. Do you want to put those changes through?
Council's got the existing infrastructure here already, it's a regular meeting place. We can call extraordinary meetings if they're necessary to be held in other parts of the local government area. I see a way around that inflexibility.
I'm happy for the motion to be put. I put the motion, all that, um, yes, all those, did we, did we actually have a mover and a seconder? I can't see. We did? Yes, yes we did, ah, yes we did councillor Conib, councillor Monahan. So all those in favour? Thank you. I was, that, that's unanimous, yes. Next. Next item is combo six. Sister city relationship between Liverpool Council and Toda Japan, page 139, tab 7. The recommendation on page 140.
I'm happy to move the, the motion, but with an amendment.
What's your amendment councillor?
Uh, instead of point two and three, uh, that we adopt the, uh, the, from the report that, um, so we, we acknowledge, uh, we, that we simply acknowledge, uh, where have I got? The invitation and confirm support for the students of Toda to come to Liverpool in 2025.
This is point two. Remove point two and three and change it to? No?
No.
No.
Just point one.
Just leave point one.
Just, yep. Given that, that we can be able to maintain the relationship.
Yes, I can see your point.
Because the current situation may very well change in term, I, I understand what the report is saying in terms of there hasn't been a take up or expectation, expected take up of, of business and exchange in that regard, but that could very well change with the opening of the international airport. And also the geopolitical shifting within the region, uh, in terms of relations, so at least by welcoming, um, the students to Liverpool, we, we may be, we may be able to restart that relationship.
Very good councillor, I need a seconder. Councillor Conib. Uh, we vote on the issue.
Just, just before you vote, sorry, through the Chair, just, and, and support a reciprocal visit. And, and support, and support a...
Thank you. All those in favour? Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, thank you, through the Chair, uh, it, it, it's just about support, there's no requirement to allocate a budget and funding source, because we are supporting a reciprocal visit. And I think the intent is to support it in principle, and, or support in principle, a reciprocal visit, and then if the actual visit emerges, we will, we should bring it back to council and make those resolutions then.
So everybody was in favour of that, so I take that as unanimous. Combo seven. Combo seven is the Financial Impact Capital Investment Feasibility for the Experiens, the World Event Series in Macquarie Mall, so page 143, tab eight. Recommendation on page 143. A mover is councillor Conib, seconded. Councillor Monahan. You decide which. Councillor Monahan, thank you.
Oh, I've just got a couple of questions. Um, I, I've noticed, I don't know if it's so correct, but the Macquarie Street, um, footpath works during this festival, are they being ceased or is that continuing?
The, thank you, through the Chair, the, the Macquarie Street footpath enhancements are continuing. And we're just waiting on the lights to arrive.
Okay, I'm going to cut down a couple more questions. I noticed on your data, there was 25 million spent on a survey from the food dealers, but we're only charging $500. Now, i- if you, if we charged 10% of that, we could have easily funded all our festivals. Is there any reason why we're charging such a small fee of less than $500 when the food vendors, according to your data, is, is, is making $25 million? Now, industry standards, um, if we charge 10%, it's below industry standards, we should honestly look at that, that charger rate.
Through the CEO.
Thank you, through the Chair, I'll just refer the question, uh, has been discussed to the Director, Community Lifestyle.
Thank, thank you, through the CEO, um, a report was tabled at the November council meeting to increase fees and charges at that time. On the onset of these festivals, we had no applications to attend. Um, since the success of them, we are getting multiple requests, and that's why the report was brought to November, to scale up the fees and charges which were then rejected and need to be brought back uh, in the new financial year, which is what we will, which is our intention.
Thank you. Does that answer your question councillor?
Yeah, happy to move it.
Thank you, so you're... Where are we? Uh, I think that was already moved by councillor Monahan, so you're happy to, so we put it to the vote? Put it to the vote, everybody in agreement? Yes, unanimous, once again. Thank you. Now we move on to the corporate support reports, Corp O1, Public Inquiry, page 152, tab nine. And the recommendations on, on 152.
Happy to move as per the book.
Councillor Monahan is moving it, seconded councillor Conib. Any, put it to the vote. Thank you, unanimous. Next is Corp O2, tabling initial pecuniary interest returns for newly elected councillors. Page 155, tab 10. Recommendation on page 155.
Happy to move as per the book.
As per book, thank you councillor. Councillor Dr Green, seconded by uh, councillor Ibrahim Mira, sorry. Haven't pronounced your name, anyway. So that's Ibrahim. Ibrahim, you'll have to... I don't know where we're up to, so we're up to, um, uh, investment report, Corp O3.
Just, just a quick question on that one. Um, it says the balance at 31 January is, is minus 21 million and projected at 30 June to be 1.1 million. Does that read correct? Is that what we're trying to achieve by 30 June?
Thank you, through the Chair to the Director of Corporate Services.
Yes, that is, that is correct, but also note that the internal restricted reserves to increase to 30, nearly 39 million.
Happy with that reply councillor?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll move as per the book.
So, uh, we vote on that? You, I did, oh yes, so moved by uh, well councillor Monahan, and seconded by councillor Conib. And voting unanimous, I take it, thank you. We might get through this yet. Corp O4. Uh, full year quarter to budget review, page 171.
I'll move as per the book.
Councillor Conib moved as per book, seconded by...
Happy to second it, but I would like to ask questions with it, and could be a possible amendment. Um, while I note on, on point three, that public notification process, um, will occur, I'm wondering if we could do the community, um, feedback first and then have it come back to council?
Tina.
What page number councillor?
Oh, sorry, one, one, well, two, two, one, oh.
That's another report.
Oh, am I on the wrong one? Oh, look, I'm ahead of myself, sorry.
Just, just a quick question, um, I noticed the debt recovery service is, um, $4 million over three years. It, it seems quite a lot for debt recovery services, just get a little bit of elaboration on that.
Thank you, through the Chair, Director of Corporate Services. Or the CFO, is it?
Sorry, page, uh, 206. Shidle, um, proprietor limited, third from the bottom.
Through the CEO, so this, um, I would assume has gone through a tendering process and that's the price that has been agreed to.
Over three years.
Over three years, yeah.
Satisfied with that councillor? Thank you. So we have, uh, we have a mover, we have a seconder, vote? All in favour? Yes, unanimous. Uh, now the City Futures, no, 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 Corp O5. Proposed permanent road closure and sale of part of Chapman Street at West Hoxton. Page 209, tab 13. Recommendation on page 210.
Now I may ask my question. Could we not do the, um, community consultation first prior to the sale, rather than, um, we note that a public notification process uh, would also involve referring the relevant service, rah, rah, rah. Um, just to, I think, gauge the community, uh, sentiment as to the closure of that road.
Thank you, through the Chair, Director of Corporate Services.
I might have to take that on notice councillor, my understanding is that, um, we start the process, there's not, there's no decision, it's got to come back to council. Yes, if you note, uh, six, the further report, come back to council on the completion. Uh, so this is only to, um, um, close the road, uh, determine what enclosures are, there are on the property. And then come back to council to resolve the report. Um, and determine if council agrees to, for the sale.
That, that's correct, so through the Chair, your wish is granted, because that, the sequence of process would have that consultation any, prior to any decision being made.
Thank you, I need a mover and a seconder.
Happy to move as per the book.
Councillor Dr Green and councillor Ristewski. Decision, vote all in favour? Yes, so it's unanimous again. So now we go to the City Futures Report. CFD 01, uh, page 218, tab 14, 218D. Recommendation for dissolving the Intermodal Precinct Committee.
I have an amended motion. Uh, one, keep the Intermodal Precinct Committee. Retain, keep, whatever prefer. Two, notes that issues arising from the Intermodal Precinct will be addressed by council through the Intermodal Precinct Committee.
Thank you. Second up, more, sorry.
Could I please remind that the conversations from the last meeting, there was also a commitment, or at least a verbal commitment, that the charter
Yes.
would be reviewed and that, you know, as we've heard from the public, that, that have spoken to us, um, that is a crucial part of the process, so that really needs to be included.
Yes, so you need suitable wording for that. Issues arising from the Intermodal Precinct will be addressed by council through the Intermodal Precinct Committee. We need reference to the charter, that's most important as people in the audience...
Could I suggest that, um, that actually the review of the charter be point two?
Good. So change that, oh, you switch them around, that's fine.
Just, just on point one, maintain the Intermodal Precinct Committee, uh, re- review of the charter. Review of the charter and perhaps it should go back to a governance meeting. Yeah, okay.
Yes, there was some debate about which, which charter we go back to, whether it was 2017, 2020 or which one, so that, that needs to be evaluated, that's good.
Um, I am aware that councillor McNair did have a, uh, amended, some amendments to go on, so, you know, I think it would be, to come back to governance committee and be able to have some input into that would be important.
Yes, we can discuss it there, that sounds good. Everybody happy with that? Problem?
Uh, yeah, just with, with number three, you're saying will be addressed by council, and there may be financial implications, so maybe considered instead of addressed?
Thank you. Everybody happy with that? Happy with that, so we put it to the vote, no, to suggest. I suggested, how are you voting, sorry? Everybody, all, all those in favour? Thank you. Unanimous. Now, that should satisfy the audience, I think. No? Thank you. Where are we? CFD O two, by annual progress report, December twenty twenty four, on page two thirty one, tab fifteen. And the recommendation is on page two thirty one.
Happy to move as per the book.
Moved as per book, councillor Monahan, seconded. Councillor Canib. Motion to be put? All in favour, unanimous. I like this, whoops, careful what I say. Special entertain, so CFD O three, special entertainment precincts, page two thirty four, tab sixteen. Recommendation on page two thirty five.
I'm happy to move as per the book, but I also have a question. I wondered if other locations had been considered as a special entertainment precinct, such as Edmondson Park? And if so, would it be possible to include that location within this, as a pilot as well?
Thank you, through the chair, I'll refer to the director of city futures.
Thank you, acting CEO, and thank you councillor Green. We're applying, this is triggers us to be able to apply for a grant, as you see in the report, the grant from the state government up to two hundred thousand dollars. So we've calculated what we can, and it's to employ a person to facilitate this process and provide material to the relevant shop owners and businesses that can do it. So we've identified through the city economy team where we want to activate the CBD. And we've extended that down, as you see from the map on page two three eight, down Memorial Avenue. And we've identified the shops, the type of retail businesses along that route and in those two main roads. Macquarie Street, Macquarie Mall, the Macquarie Street that we're operating at the moment, and George Street, that there's opportunities for us to do that. So we've done some consultation. Happy to consider other areas, this is a trial, but we'll stretch that budget very thin, already is stretched very thin, to, 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 to be effective.
Completely understand. Also conscious that, you know, in those outer areas like Edmondson Park or even, well, at least it's developed there, there's not, you know, for. To be offered, to offer, to offer something similar in an external area outside the CBD would, you know, would cater to a lot, you know, more people. Rather than coming to CBD, so if there's opportunity to expand, that maybe if we could raise Edmondson Park as, as another test site later, later in the trial.
Yes, I think through the deputy mayor, I think that's a very good suggestion and I'll, I'll speak to city economy, we'll trial, trial this. We have the human resources here in the building that look after these particular streets, city economy team. And see how, how the take up is, it also relates to our university student city, the CBD city. And then come back to council to report how, how it performs and seek more funding either through council or through further grants from the minister if they have them, to expand it to those other areas. It's a very good suggestion and you might want to amend that or take on, or will take on board what you suggested.
Could we make, probably make it a point four?
Yes, that a future trial be conducted in other areas like Edmondson Park?
As soon as we get that up. Seconder, you're happy to second that, did you say councillor Canib? Thank you.
Yes, deputy mayor, thank you.
So that's complete, yes, so we motion, put the motion.
Mr May, deputy mayor, there's no quorum at the moment.
We just wait until councillor Monahan returns. Thank you. Motion to be, motion, put the motion, those in favour? Thank you, unanimous. So now I have to, now operations, sorry, operations report. Operations O one, how to expedite the upgrade of Edmondson and Fourth Avenue in Ostrill, page two four two, tab seventeen. And recommendation on page two four two. Mover?
Happy to move that way. I have a suggestion that could be an amendment.
Happy to second.
Happy, so councillor Dr Green and councillor Monahan and your amendment councillor.
Well, I note that as a growth council, the considerations in terms of the road funding, when you look at the road funding, it's quite significant shortfall. In ensuring that that infrastructure can be delivered. So I guess what I'm suggesting is that council could partner with a university to conduct a case study research of the challenges to local government in greenfield development and the provisions of a required infrastructure. I guess why I'm saying that is that at some point, other greenfield space in Liverpool is going to be, be opened up for housing. And if we can learn some of the, like, learn from some of the things that have occurred in Ostrill, may very well ensure that there's a smoother opening up and development of further greenfield space in Liverpool. But it also will affect other local government areas as well. So it's, it's like, you know, making sure that the state government in a way that, for a growth council, that we're properly funded to be able to provide that hard infrastructure like roads and stuff like that.
Thank you councillor, you've spoken effectively for your motion. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair, a good idea councillor, perhaps if, rather than resolving it point two in that fashion, which obliges me to partner or council to partner. Can we have investigate partnerships? Investigate partnerships, that way that gives us an opportunity because we, we may not be able to partner, but we're certainly asked the question if, I think it's a very salient point.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussions, motion, so I put the motion, all those in favours, thank you, unanimous. And now, operations O two, council aquatic and recreation centre amended master plan design, page two forty nine. Tab number eighteen and recommendation on two forty nine. And I thank the council staff for persevering so far, thank you.
I'll move as per the report.
Councillor Canib moves as a report. Councillor Ibrahim, sorry. Councillor Ibrahim as a seconder. Motion, put the motion, all those in favours, very good, unanimous once again. We are now up to. Yes.
Just, 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 just on that, I, I echo your, your sentiment deputy mayor. The amount of work that's been put in this, I think it's, whilst it's important the go ahead is, is given today, I think it's also important to acknowledge in the report, there was some community dissatisfaction about the delay and I don't think that that's unfathomable, I think in the circumstances, you know, rightfully so. When people want a project and they want it delivered, they want it delivered in a particular way and, and they want it delivered on time and on budget. And whilst this may not meet everyone's desires, I think it's in the circumstances, considering the grant and the funding that's been approved. With what we've had to work with as a council since our inception in September, I think it's a credit to the staff to getting it to this point. And yes, it's credit to council for, for moving this way and just, and getting on with the job.
Thank you councillor, thank you.
Yes, absolutely, we have been involved with this for some time and we've had lots of discussions. And under the circumstances, I think the survey that we did, about ninety percent of the residents actually agreed with it. So you can't please everybody, but nonetheless, it's an excellent outcome and I personally thank you for all the effort you put into it. And putting up with me arguing with you, thank you. Okay, operations O three, Harris Creek flood study, page two ninety, tab nineteen. Recommendation on page, sorry, recommendation on page two ninety, that's correct. Harris Street flood study, and once again, I would like to thank, is the council staff here who put all that effort into it? They're online, and I would like to thank the council staff for that extensive amount of work that really put a lot of time and effort into it. If you look at the maps and the reports, that, we should be recommending those people for their efforts. So on my behalf and councillor's behalf, thank you very much. I need a mover and a seconder. Councillor Dr Green and councillor Ibrahim, thank you. I take it everybody's in favour of this, unanimous, thank you. Operations O four, update on basin program designed for Ostrill, page two ninety five, tab twenty. Recommendation on the same page, two ninety five. Mover?
Happy to move as per the book.
Councillor Monahan as per book, seconded councillor Ibrahim. Ibrahim, I got it right? I'm going to have to practice, sorry, sorry councillor. Right, so motion, everybody, anyone's in favour, very good, so it's unanimous once again. And operations O five, truck wash price list, page three hundred, tab twenty one, and recommendation on the same page.
Happy to move as per the book.
As per book, councillor Dr Green and seconded by councillor Ibrahim, oh, you're getting very good at this. So now we go for the committee reports, there's only one. So that's the traffic, minutes of the Liverpool Local Traffic Committee held on the twentieth of January, page three O three, tab twenty two. Recommendation on three O three, mover? Any discussion mover, movers, miss? Sorry councillor, councillor Canib, seconded councillor Dr Green. Motion, put the motion, all those in favour? Thank you, unanimous. Now we come to questions with notice. No, do the comments first. That's the problem then. You do this first, otherwise we're going to move people, get them back in here. Okay, questions with notice, QWN O one, question with notice, councillor McNort, extreme heat days. Councillor McNort is not here and since it's her motion, we go, we. We have any answers for that? The answers are obviously provided in the booklet, so no, not a problem, so we go to the next one. Is councillor Hart is not here either. Councillor Canib, QWN O three. Councillor Canib, the issue is, are you happy with those answers?
I am, I sent this question on notice through on the tenth of February. And it's, it's, I'm happy with the answers, it's been approved, it's now functional, it's operational.
So you're happy with all of that?
Yes, I am, thank you, and I thank the staff for their response.
Thank you.
Through the chair, QWN four is withdrawn, we'll have to defer to March. Sorry? I'll correct myself, it's not answered correctly councillor and we'll have to defer to March.
Sorry, thank you. You happy with that councillor, Ristewski? Good. Question O five, which is councillor Green, Liverpool City Council master plans. Happy with that, thank you very much. Question O six, again Dr Green, outstanding voluntary planning agreements.
Answered, answered in March.
Just, just noting through the chair, response to these questions, have we provided the twenty sixth of March council agenda?
Yeah, you can see that, so that's fine, yep. Question O seven, councillor Canib, development applications, is that answered or? Yes, you're happy with that councillor Canib?
Look, yes, through the chair. I can't say I'm happy with what it's about, but I will, I'll just through the chair to the appropriate director. In terms of where to from here for this proposal, I understand that it's going to go to the local planning panel for determination. Do the community get notification of when that is to occur so they can have a degree of representation on it?
Yes, through the chair, my understanding is through, it's a matter before the Land and Environment Court, but I refer to director, planning and compliance.
Through the acting CEO, yes, so in both scenarios, objectors are notified. So a listed objector is notified and invited typically to a local planning panel meeting. So through the court process, they will also typically be invited to an onsite meeting to enable them to verbally express or make representations.
Thank you. Happy with the answer? Thank you, now I lost my place there and it's question O eight, councillor Monahan, DA.
Yes, it relates to the same DA, I appreciate the answers that were given in respect to the previous question. There doesn't seem to be much of a difference between a boarding house and a co-living housing development. I can see that the answer before me, but can I just get a bit of an explanation on that through the acting CEO to the director?
As perplexed as you are councillor, director of planning and compliance may help us both out.
Through the acting CEO, yes, you're right councillor, in the spirit of living arrangements, they appear to be very similar. Co-living is a newer terminology and something that's come out of, you know, a set of border housing reforms to tackle housing supply and affordability. Are there any particular components that, there are sets of controls that would apply to boarding houses and co-living. And they may differ depending on which environmental plan a DA would be lodged under. So whether that's under our LEP or under the housing set. What I can do is perhaps offer a, take it on notice and offer a comparison of the controls, give you a bit more insight.
Thank you, I appreciate that, because from what I can gather, they seem to be largely similar, but for the fact that a boarding house seems to be used to provide affordable housing, if not carried out by landed housing corporation. Now, just a question on co-living housing developments. It says here that it provides occupants with a principal place of residence for at least three months. Does that mean it's mainly intended to be a temporary form of housing?
Through the acting CEO. It's interesting because some of the interpretations, there's been a lot of interest in co-living as part of either a, a partial component of a, of a multi-use development or holistic sort of building, providing co-living. And there seems to be a lot of attraction to co-living as supplementing. Say for example, university students where perhaps student housing providers don't see an appropriate model out here in Liverpool. So they're providing co-living as an option, that's some of the sort of concepts that we've seen so far. And then there are other co-living developments perhaps such as this one that maybe not directly affiliated with any aspiration to house, you know, certain demographic of people. But the intent is that it does provide. housing that's of a nature to support people who can't afford self, you know, self-sufficient dwellings.
Thank you, I won't take up any more time. I'll wait for the comparison that you provide. I greatly appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you councillor. Questions nine and ten are awaiting answers for the next council meeting. So we're up to question eleven, councillor Canib, legal costs regarding local government elections.
I don't have any other questions. I think the question and answer is pretty specific in terms of quantum.
You're happy with that? Very good, thank you. So we go to, you've also got question twelve.
Yes, this one I do have questions on.
Okay, you're happy with that?
No, this one I do have questions on. In terms of, there's obviously a cost to an election. It's particularly would have been notified, oh sorry, it would have been known before the commencement of the last election because it was dealt with through a private organisation. But can I understand what the approximate quantum would be for a by-election in, for example, South Ward and or North Ward? Would it just be the cost of the election divided by two and it would be either or?
Rough order of magnitude, you could probably divide it by three because obviously half, it's half the ward, but it's probably an extra additional less effort because they're of scale. So whatever, the election I think was one point six. You'd be looking at somewhere, somewhere between half a million and eight hundred thousand dollars, rough order of magnitude, I would expect if it was half the ward. Half the election.
Not to be, well, I'm not going to say not to be overly critical, not to be critical, but how does something like this get missed?
I'm embarrassed, we, our hands up, it was an oversight by council. Only council, council staff are to blame, and on the CEO, we missed it. Full stop, no excuses, lessons learned, nothing more sinister than that. Absolute oversight, which was picked up pretty quickly afterwards, but it being a genius in hindsight, one assists this discussion.
Well, thank you, acting CEO, and I appreciate the candidness about that. No, I've got no further questions.
Thank you. Councillor Monahan?
Are we able to rectify that at all or time has passed?
Thank you councillor, through the chair, no, time has passed.
So has there been a procedure developed that will make sure that, you know, first council meeting?
Let me just say, if the incumbents are in place for the next election, we shan't miss it again. The procedure in itself is something we have to do. We didn't do it, it was an oversight.
You might also say those were extraordinary times. So, you know, anyway, next one is quest councillor Monahan, vacancies?
I have no further questions.
No further questions?
Answers it very succinctly, thank you.
Thank you. Again, the next one is question fourteen.
Again, no further, no further questions, answers are very succinctly, thank you.
Fifteen and sixteen. You've got a lot.
Fifteen is twenty sixth of March. We're going to defer that one.
Oh, we defer that, okay.
Fifteen, yes, yeah.
Yep, deferred.
And sixteen.
And sixteen.
No, sixteen, sixteen's got an answer.
Sixteen's there, good.
I'm content with the answer, thank you.
You're happy with that? Okay, that gets us all of those done. Question seventeen is in the addendum booklet number five. Question with notice, security guards, question seventeen, is there an answer provided?
There is, yes.
Is an answer provided?
Page three of book five. Page three.
Page three, yes, five, no tabs, just one book. Do you mean I'm going to get to this?
Yeah, we're looking good. Looks like this councillor. It's purple, book five.
All right, so that gets us through to presentation by councillors. And I, no, did I?
Seventeen, done?
Yes.
Sorry?
You're happy with seventeen councillor? Councillor Rystewski, security, you're happy with the answer? Thank you, I thought just, I thought that was the case. Okay, that gets us to somewhere I didn't think we would get to tonight. My presentation. No? Oh, we've got to go, yes, presentation is before NOMs. Councillor, I did a lot of preparation for this. I do. Okay, I will read this out. And so first of all, Mr Mayor is not here, so it is my pleasure to report, to report that since the last meeting, some tough action has been taken to do something about the scourge of shopping trolleys on the city streets. You will recall that at the last meeting, I asked a question with notice about the issue and I thank those involved for taking steps to bring some public attention to bear. Acting CEO Jason Breton called together a focus team, bringing together representatives from the operations, compliance and communications team. Together they organised the highly successful Trolley Blitz, which took place last Friday, that gained significant online and broadcast media attention. The city supermarkets all received letters warning them that council was well and truly fed up and the gloves are now well and truly off. They were also put on notice that they needed to, one, review their policies regarding trolley management and enforcement, and two, increase the reach and regularity of their trolley collection operations, and three, take steps to prevent trolleys from leaving the immediate area of the outlets. It's a sad fact that under the current legislation, council cannot immediately impound all trolleys to get them off the streets. In some cases, we need to wait up to four days before action can be taken. Unfortunately, trolleys rarely carry contact details for the relevant outlet, making it difficult to comply with the legislation and notification requirements are onerous and make the impounding process overly complicated. This is leading to an unsightly build-up of abandoned trolleys on front lawns, public spaces and on roads and footpaths. I congratulate the relevant council staff for taking such strong action in response to my concerns. I now know measures, including the impounding of dumped trolleys, will be implemented. The council communications team has put together some social media on the issue and I'd like to share that with you now.
Liverpool City Council is calling for tougher state laws to end the menace of abandoned trolleys.
Shopping trolleys are a major problem in Liverpool. In order to address that, the government needs to allow us to collect those trolleys immediately, issue higher fines, and that should get rid of the problem.
If supermarkets don't take greater responsibility for shopping trolleys, the council will impound them and shred them. If that doesn't work, we'll start fining. At up to one thousand three hundred and twenty dollars a trolley, that's a big bill for the supermarkets. For full details, read our media release on our website.
Thank you. Ah, there's more, there's more, I haven't finished yet. Thank you. Shopping trolley owners that continue to show disregard for abandoned trolleys can receive fines. These range from six hundred and sixty dollars to thirteen twenty dollars a trolley, with larger fines for clusters. At this stage, council is not imposing fines, but will do so unless the problem of abandoned trolleys is resolved. It makes sense to be lenient at first, with the threat of a severe financial penalty being held over if there is an improvement. Most importantly, impounded trolleys that are not collected by their owners will be fed through council's scrap metal shredder. Our comms team organised an exclusive story that ran on Channel Nine on Friday night and briefed me well as the council spokesman on the issue. We defined the issue in four clear points. Trolleys are being randomly dumped across Sydney and the owners are not doing enough to retrieve them. Two, abandoned trolleys are a massive safety issue, with the potential to cause pedestrians and motor car accidents. Three, recent state legislation has not made it easier for councils to deal with the problems. And four, the law should be changed so that councils can immediately impound any and all abandoned trolleys, removing the problem from our streets and the fines should be higher. I'd like to see the story. I thank Channel Nine for supporting our stance. And again, I thank the comms team and those involved for getting us this awareness about the issue. You can run that additional story, thank you.
Thank you, Evie. They are, I saw some potentially safety hazards and reports of abandoned shopping trolleys in Sydney have surged by thirty five percent. Now, one Sydney council is taking a drastic measure to crack down on the problem. A flock of rogue shopping trolleys about to meet their maker. One by one shredded. Liverpool council uses this machine called the crock to break down mattresses. Now it will be munching on abandoned shopping carts, turning them into scrap metal which can be recycled rather than ending up in landfill. So this is a potential game changer?
I think so, I think very much so. Council would be spending eight hundred thousand dollars per annum on landfill feeds. So the beauty of that is, we're not only saving the money, we're also saving, so we're saving an expense and we're earning an income.
A new weapon in the battle against a suburban plague seemingly getting worse.
Already this year in Sydney and New South Wales, we've seen over eight thousand reports and we're only kind of a month and a half into the year.
Councils say laws giving retailers four days to collect abandoned trolleys in the streets is part of the problem.
We need to change the legislation so that the council can impound them immediately, have higher fines, and that gets them off the street.
But for now, councils are tasked with a cumbersome clean-up, a big blitz happening in Liverpool today. A precious mo-
Thank you. That, that's the first time I've seen that muncher munch those things up. I had an idea of what they did, but that's pretty good, very good. Let's hope it has the desired effect on the community. Right, so we now go to notices of motions, and the first one is NOMO one, budget review and financial stability.
Happy to move as per the book?
Move as per book councillor Dr Green.
Happy to second.
Sorry?
Happy to second.
Happy to second councillor Monahan. Any discussion? No, so motion, put the motion, all those in favour? Unanimous, very good. NOMO two, background and compliance checks for council laws. NOMO two, yes.
Shouldn't it lapse for lack of a mover and a seconder unless anyone here is?
Well, we, seeing as those are not here, then that, that.
Assuming the origin one in the room?
Yes, the originator's not here and the idea is that the originator of the motion must move the motion or should move the motion. So that lapses. NOMO three?
I want to withdraw this one, I'm just waiting on some further particulars.
So we've withdrawn NOMO three. NOMO four?
And same with that one, I'm happy with the response.
Okay, good. NOMO five, festivals. Who did that?
Happy to move that to the end because there's some mortgage and stuff that need to be spoken about.
NOMO six, I think that would lapse since the councillor's not here. And NOMO seven, legal fees and expenses.
Move to the end as well.
Move to the end, okay. NOMO eight?
Move to the end.
Move to the end. So five, seven and eight to the end. NOMO nine, community campaign for clean-up Liverpool Day.
I'm happy to move this one to be discussed and put to a vote.
Sorry?
I'm happy to move it to a vote.
Move it, okay.
Happy to second.
And NOM ten, move to seek advice from minister of local government regarding mayor.
We're dealing with, we're dealing with nine now.
We're dealing with nine, okay, commu-, sorry. We're dealing with nine, I thought you said leave it to you, misunderstood, my apologies. So councillor, you moved it, seconder councillor Monahan, discussion? No discussion, happy with that? Yes, good, so that's, put the motion, all those in favours? Thank you, unanimous. So that's got that one. What's the next one?
NOM ten?
NOM ten?
I'll move that to the end.
Move that to the end? So we're into confidential, confidential, where is that? O one, project twenty six. Project twenty six. I need a mover?
Confidential.
Well, what we can do is, providing we don't use, we discuss, what is it? Details that are, not controversial, but you know what I mean, confidential, we can't discuss it. So we can vote on the issue, as long as we don't discuss major details with finances, et cetera. So project twenty six, I need a mover?
I'm happy to move points two and three as points one and two. But with the greatest of your respect, without having had a detailed briefing, I couldn't comment on either the benefits or challenges, but I'm happy for the project to commence and then add a point three that the matter be dealt with at a workshop. I'll leave the timing and the date up to the council offices.
Needs to be after hours.
But something that can accommodate all councillors.
Hmm, after hours.
Sorry, through the chair, at a time convenient to all councillors.
I'm content with that.
So councillor, councillor Dr Green, seconded?
Can I just ask a question about two without going into great detail? When we say incorporate it, incorporate the project into the budget long-term plan, is that as a result of realising one and then one being determined by council? And then it's considered in terms of its approach, or is it just a holistic viewpoint as to what it may achieve and forecast that in there as a? Is it, you know, is it, is there a real, like, how do you budget that? And then I guess doesn't that necessarily flow on from one?
Not really. It's actually a project management strategy, because if I, if I incorporate it as a project, I can start looking at capitalising some of the labour. Like, if you look at the systems improvements we need, that can be capital improvements via the project. So I'm actually using the project as the instrument to, as we move along, incorporate it. That's, that's the intent of two. It's, it's a, it's a, and I'll just refer to the director of corporate services. It's, it's a, it's a, and I'll just refer to the Director of Corporate Services.
Yeah, through the CEO, council is obviously between now and June through, uh, re- reviewing and implementing project twenty-six. Um, there will no, well, very likely be, um, some options being put to the council and where they have financial implications, clearly they will be included in the long-term financial plan.
Everybody happy with it? Councillor Knibb?
Yes, thank you. Deputy Mayor, that answers my question.
Answers your question, so let's, um, move, put the, I put the motion. All those in favour? No, so that's unanimous as well. Next one is confidential item O two, rate modelling and Liverpool civic place valuation. Page twenty-one, recommendation on page twenty-one in the confidential booklet number three.
As per the book, just noting and receiving the report.
Very good. Councillor Dr Green seconded. Councillor Monahan. Right, so, uh, I put the motion. All those in favour? Unanimous. Config O three, consideration of an application for the acquisition of land on the grounds of hardship. This hardship, one ninety, one sixty, Ninth Avenue, Austral identified as part of lot nineteen hundred DP six one four six three seven, page forty-six, recommendation on page forty-seven. A mover? Councillor Rystevsky moved it, seconder. Seconded councillor Knibb. I put the motion, all those in favours, unanimous, thank you. Config O four, purchase lot one plan acquisition, we're at one twenty-two Edmondson Avenue, Austral for road widening. Page fifty-five, recommendation on page fifty-six. Mover? Councillor Green. Dr Green seconded. Councillor Rystevsky, thank you. Uh, move, put the motion, all those in favours? Yes, unanimous again. Uh, config O five, permanent road closure and sale of part of the former alignment of the old Brinjelly Road at Horningsay Park. Page sixty, recommendation on page sixty-one. Mover? Councillor Rystevsky, seconder councillor Dr Green. And conf-, uh, put the motion, sorry, getting away. Thank you. Uh, that was unanimous as well. Config O six, memorandum of understanding, national intermodal company.
Just, just a quick question.
Page sixteen, yes councillor Rystevsky.
Any reason why this one's confidential?
Good question.
Uh, yes, uh, the basis of confidentiality is described, confidentiality is described on page sixty-seven in italics.
Can we maybe defer this to the?
That's a good idea. Defer that? Defer to the, uh, no, to the, uh, to next council meeting. Is that, is that what you want to do? Or defer it to the end of the meeting? To the next council meeting? Councillor Rystevsky, sorry? Next council meeting, that's what I thought you said. Okay, uh, so we defer that to the next council meeting. Uh, councillor Rystevsky was the mover, councillor Monahan seconded. Question councillor Monahan?
Um, could we defer it to the next council meeting with a briefing to be provided to councillors at the next governance committee meeting? It seems a bit odd to just defer it without asking for more information and then getting in the same position at the next month.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair, we've actually met with Moorbank, so we, we have a briefing, we are ready to go. So at the governance meeting, we will talk you through it.
Thank you, sorry, thank you. So, um, motion, I put the motion. Good, unanimous. Config O seven, functional brief for the community centre at Edmondson Park.
Very happy to move to, move this as per the book?
Thank you, as per the book. Councillor Dr Green seconded. Councillor Ibrahim. Config O eight, Hammondville Park. Oh, sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself again. Put the motion. All those in favour? Thank you, again unanimous. So, well, that was Edmondson Park. And now Hammondville Park. Config O eight, Hammondville Park.
Just a, a brief question before, uh, we move it because I'm not sure what the recommendation is asking us to do. I understand there's a, there's a heading for recommendation at the bottom of page one seven zero, um.
One six nine one seven.
So is, are we moving that we're seeking further community consultation?
Yes, through the, through the chair. Yes, we are councillor. And sorry for the ambiguity, it looks like the recommendation's actually contained in the first sentence on one seventy-one, that further community consultation take place either preliminary to or conjunction with the public exhibition of this new draft plan of management.
Just one quick question. On page two two five, um, it talks about revenue from the use of Hammondville Park. Uh, there's a figure on there, I don't know if I can mention it or not, but I won't. Then it states, uh, estimated ongoing maintenance costs significantly exceed that income. Now with the licensee being Moorbank Sports Club, why aren't we charging to recover the costs completely?
Through the chair, good question councillor. I'll take it on notice. Something I'm always looking at. I think, given, given the intent of the recommendations about community consultation, let's, I, I think it'd be prudent to move ahead with that. And, and let's do that concurrently and if there's any challenges in that.
Good, I need a mover?
Yeah, so the, so just for abundant caution, the motion is, um, that council conducts further community consultation in conjunction with public exhibition of a new draft plan of management.
Yep.
Happy to move that way.
Thank you councillor. So moved councillor Monahan. I'll wait until you cut and paste. And a seconder. I need councillor Dr Green, thank you. Now we go to, oh. I put the motion. See? Nearly forgot. Thank you, unanimous. Config O nine, land acquisitions on detention basins and detention basins. Page two ninety-seven on the confidential book and it's in the same page. Moved. By? Councillor Green, councillor Dr Green. Moved and ca-, oh, sorry, I was looking at her first. Councillor Rystevsky, you're going to second it. Thank you very much. Uh, motion, I put the motion. Uh, unanimous, thank you. Now we go to the con-, we go to confidential addendum book, config ten. Page three and it's a recommendation on page four. New fees and charges neighbouring council curbside mattress collection trial. I need a, yes, endorses the fees and charges, yes, yes, yes. Moved. As per book councillor Dr Green, seconded by councillor Ibrahim. And we go to confi-, oh, move the motion. Motion be put, move. I put the motion, all in favour? Thank you. That's unanimous as well. We're going too fast for you? No? Oh, yes. Recruitment, recruitment of the CEO. That's confidential as well. We need to be careful what we say. But that's fine. We can put it to, so we can, you can, you know what it's about. I need a mover?
Can we move a, an amendment?
Move an amendment?
Yes, um, my amendment. The, which point is the councillors? On the panel? So can we nominate, um, nominate councillors now?
Nominate members of the panel, yes, that's fine.
Can I put some names, can I put names forward?
Sorry?
I'd like to put some names forward.
Yes, you want to put some names forward, yes, that's fine.
Councillor Knibb. Councillor Dr Betty Green. Councillor Deputy Mayor Hart. Sorry, yeah, Peter Hart, sorry, not Hart.
That's fine.
Um, uh, myself. Mirror councillor.
Councillor Ibrahim.
Sorry, the mayor, yes. And McNorton, uh, councillor McNorton.
Councillor McNorton. One, two. Knibb councillor, Green councillor. You, you probably need to look at those names again. We have councillor Knibb, councillor Green.
I believe the mayor was, hasn't been written on there yet. He's on there, no, no he's not. Yeah, councillor Rystevsky did say the mayor's name.
Okay, so Mayor Manon. Councillor Knibb, councillor Dr Green. Uh, deputy mayor councillor Rystevsky, councillor Ibrahim and councillor McNorton. Is, how do those numbers look?
Sorry, um, just remove councillor Ibrahim.
Good, yeah. Councillor remove councillor Ibrahim. Six now. That's, uh, that's six councilors. And, um, are you happy with that? Do we have to?
Yes, I, I think what should occur is the entire recommendation is copied and pasted below. And then what happened, what should happen is this should be captured as below point five. As the new six, I will take it and then six and seven would become seven and eight. So. So if we go back to that, the weights. Sorry.
Be that, um, establish a selection panel, that the, that the selection panel is as described with the task of A to D.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I can see it.
Very good. Now I have a question. Do we need an external independent? Needs to be said, is it in there?
It's not a requirement, but it's preferred.
Preferred. So we should add that if that's what we believe. I believe that to be the case, we need an external independent?
Five, five C?
Five C.
With guidance and assistance from the independent consultant.
Oh, yes, very good.
Should we, should we add them?
It's in four, is the independent probity advisor?
So all of that should be captured?
I would, I would recommend you incl- increase, include the independent with the panel, that name, yeah, with the list.
We can't name a person. But just as an external independent, yes, yes, it needs a name. Independent chair, very good. See, oh yes, configure. Right, so we're happy with that? Any issues? No comments? Thank you. So I, we have a mover and a seconder, did we, on that? At the top? I believe so. I can't remember who it was. Can we scroll up a little bit? Yes, councillor Rystevsky, we need a seconder, I believe. So councillor Monahan seconded it. Right, I, uh, put the motion, all those in favours? Thank you, that's unanimous as well. So we are now, we, we wait for the CEO to come back in or you want to continue? He's coming? You can do that. Unsolicited proposal project, yes, he should be talking about that. So config twelve is the unsolicited proposal project included in the confidential addendum book. Councillor Dr Betty Green moved it, a seconder. Uh, councillor Monahan seconded it. Any discussion? Very good. Yes, other than we're very happy with it, unanimous. So I put the motion. Everybody's happy with that, good, so that's again unanimous. And would you believe it? No, we have to. Weren't there some things moved to the end councillor Rystevsky?
NOM five, seven, eight and ten.
NOM.
What was the last ones that you said?
Five, seven, eight and ten.
Five, seven, eight and ten. Right.
Happy to move them to the next meeting. I think we've had enough excitement for tonight.
Councillor. So do you want to move all of them? So one, two, three, four. So the motion is to move uh, NOM O five, O seven, O eight and ten to the next meeting. No issues? No issues, no issues with that, so that looks good. I need a mover? Councillor Rystevsky. A seconder for that motion. Yeah, councillor Monahan. Thank you, I put the motion. All in favour? Yes, unanimous. Thank you very much. I think, I think that's it. Yes, sir? No other business? Thank you very much and we'll see you next time. Thank you for your cooperation. Thank you staff. It's been a, been a busy night.